I move Bill 362-31, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary to the third reading, and I also like the opportunity to speak to it, please.
Seeing no objection, so ordered. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Bill 362-31 is an act to add a new chapter, 27, to Title 16 of the Guam Code Annotated relative to bicycle safety. And before I go on, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank the Guam Cycling Federation, the Office of Highway Safety with the Department of Public Works and the Attorney General's Office, as well as the good Chairman and the Committee on the Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary on putting together what is now an amended version of the original bill that addresses bicycle safety here on Guam. You know, Mr. Speaker, over the last few years, more noticeably over the last couple of years, there has been an interest and a surge in as far as bicyclists or those individuals who use, basically by human power, two-wheeled cycles on our roadways. And as a result of even the, I guess, increased traffic as well as, you know, the improvements to our roadways and whatnot, there is an increase in the number of individuals that bicycle and that use these roadways for bicycle. What this bill basically provides is now, it's common sense legislation, you know, with regards to bicycling on our roadways and the utilization of bicycles, is that it provides now a requirement that safety gear must be utilized when you're using it, you know, at least, you know, in case of just bicycling anywhere, the utilization of a bike helmet. You know, Mr. Speaker, I was trained on a motorcycle. I'm an avid bicyclist. I went out on a couple of events with the Guam Cycling Federation. That organization itself not only emphasizes and wants to bring the awareness of course to the benefits of bicycling and bicycling and bringing cycling awareness on Guam, but they're also strong advocates to cycling on Guam safely and having the protective gear necessary so that you can cycle safely. This bill also provides, in as far as some of the, lack of a better term, rules of the road with regards to when you're bicycling on the road. Just yesterday, you know, my wife and I were traveling on the roadway, and, you know, you had an individual on the bicyclist, and granted, this individual may have, you know, he looked like this individual has, he's been a cyclist for quite a number of years. He, of course, he's very proficient on the bike. Concern that I had is the way he was weaving in and out of traffic on the bicycle. Now, I think we've all basically had our little mishaps with regards to bicycling when we were younger. Today, bikes are made to go a lot faster, a lot farther, and they're more lightweight. And because of those things, you know, the bikes that we knew back then are much, much more different than the bikes that are being utilized today. And you're seeing a lot more individuals use bikes, bicycles as a means of transportation. And so what this provides is not only the rules of the road with regards to safety when it comes to the cyclist, but rules of the road and the protective gear required by the cyclist themselves. This legislation would provide that all bicyclists who are going to use or are going to traverse on our roadways must operate their bicycles and wear helmets, helmets that are approved for bicycle safety, as well as if they're going to use the bikes, bicycles at night, that they wear at least a reflective material so that they can see them from distances, from far distances. And so, again, this is proactive legislation, I want to say, although there have been some instances where there have been mishaps with regards to bicyclists being hit by motorists. In some of those cases, possibly if there was this type of legislation that basically dictates as to how you can pass bicyclists as they're traveling in the same direction, on the same roadways, possibly this could have helped in saving their lives. But more importantly, it's for future, to avoid future mishaps in the future with regards to bicyclists of all ages. I ask my colleagues for their support with this legislation, and I'm very interested to hear the kind of discussions that we may have to make this legislation better if they so choose. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Panglinen. Then Senator Palacios.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly stand in support of providing a safe bicycling environment for our community. You know, as the author who sponsored the requirement that bike lanes be integrated, bike and pedestrian lanes be integrated into the construction of all new roads, I must express my dismay in the continued ignoring of that law. Because to me, that's the most important thing we can do for providing safety to our bicyclists. You know, no matter what you do or clothes they wear, if you don't give them a safe place to ride and you force these riders out to be with the flow of traffic when they don't have to be because you follow the law, then we will do much more in terms of providing them safety. The idea of requiring helmets, I certainly, you know, I'm a little bit ambivalent about that requirement, most especially for the adults. We know that in a large instance, it is the children who are bicycling, and that we want to protect them. But it also presents to me, you know, if they're riding from Grandma's house to Auntie's house, and they don't put on a helmet, I don't know. You know, if it's down the street or so forth, is it really necessary? But I guess we can't be overly cautious, although, again, do we now discourage somebody or do we make somebody, I guess we won't make him a criminal, but a violator of law to ride without a helmet if he's within the village streets, you know? But I guess the danger is still there. The danger is still there. So, I just want to say that I think it's so important that we do all that we can to try and implement existing laws with regards to requiring the Department of Public Works that whenever possible, and they all give you the excuse, oh, well, you know, we don't have enough money, or else we're going to have to do less roads. Well, maybe you do have to do less roads because individuals who choose to transport themselves from one place or another using bicycles deserve that. They have a right to a safe experience in terms of commuting. And if we're going to provide it for our motorists, then we need and we owe an obligation to our bicyclists because of the contributions that they make to our environment and to removing congestion from the roads even, to give them that same opportunity to have a place in which they can travel that'll be safe and provide them with the greatest degree of safety possible. Again, it's, I kind of was looking through the bill and trying to determine what happens to the kid who gets caught, you know, without a helmet when he's riding to Grandma's house. I mean, I couldn't immediately tell from my perusal of the bill, but I certainly don't want to make that person or that young child in any way discourage him from hopping on the bike, but certainly want to ensure that he has a safe place to ride and so forth. So, the intent is good. I think the effect of the legislation itself will certainly be positive, and it's a step in addition to other initiatives proposed by this body to provide a safe area and opportunity for our members of the community that wish to use bicycles or tricycles as a mode of transportation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. I have Senator Palacios and Senator Mabini. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Barnes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. Bicycling, Mr. Speaker, has become popular and, of course, will continue to grow in popularity. In today's, of course, population, they're conscious with physical fitness and sports. We have seen now more and more bicycle out there. I believe that this bill, Mr. Speaker, it's time for this bill to be considered and adopted into law. The bill supports for safe bicycling for the rider, the passenger, and others using the public roads. The bill requires wearing of safety helmet. It restricts to only one passenger and no more than, it restricts the carrying of, anyone under one-year-old cannot be a passenger. It restricts carrying a package so as to interfere with one hand. And this all spells safety, Mr. Speaker. It requires sufficient lighting, including reflective materials, so that if you cannot see, at least you can be seen. And there are rules of the road as to when to pass and how to pass, how to overtake, the obedience to the traffic laws. This bill is very detailed, and its purpose, of course, is to promote a safe bicycling out there for everyone that uses the public highway, and I rise in support of this bill, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Mabini, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I too rise in support of Bill 362-31, and I commend the author of the bill, for both professional, personal reasons. One, I have a brother who's an avid bicyclist, and several, actually, several years ago, he was riding down Agania. He usually rides from Timuning to the, excuse me, the Chikupua Circle. And he was slowing down, and he accidentally, unintentionally fell and cracked his head and decided to curb. And I was very, you know, he was very fortunate. He has a large gash, and from then on, he's always been wearing a helmet and has been a safe rider since. Having had, also lived in the States, I remember every neighborhood that I went to, I never saw one child ride without a bicycle helmet. That was just at least my experience when I lived in Arizona as well as Minneapolis. So, this is something that I believe that is long overdue. I see the kids in my neighborhood riding with their helmets. I know when I ride on my bicycle, I ride my helmet. Of course, my bicycle has little tassels, but that's okay. I still need to wear my helmet. And last but not least, my very good friend of mine actually works for a traumatic brain injury center, and many of his clientele are survivors from accidents just like bicycles. And the traumatic injury and the recovery is really awful, and it could have been easily prevented if they had helmets. So, I too am in full support of this and hope that this will continue strengthening, and we will continue strengthening bills like this so that we can promote safety. Not to say the least that the cost savings to families, emotional and medical, you know, would be tremendous. And again, thank you to the author for entering Bill 362.
Thank you very much, Senator Mabini. Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
I was just going to say that. Sidus Mossi, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak to this proposed Bill 362-31. I want to say, I want to thank my good brother for introducing this bill. And I was hoping, Mr. Speaker, that maybe one way or another, that an amendment could be made, not just for bicycles, but also motorized vehicles, but we'll save that date for a later time, and you and I understand what happened the last time we did that. But I just want to share with you that after looking over some of the committee reports and what some of the recommendations were, I do know that some of the changes were made, amended by the committee. But I just wanted to share, as in the fines imposed here, I know that in order for us to make things work here, we need to enforce teeth. And I just think as we look at this fine, regular traffic citations are probably in the range of, I guess, depending five miles over every, the speed limit plus, I guess, the $20 imposed fine. So, when I look at that compared to what's on here, I just think it's a little bit too steep. So, if I may, what page did you say? Four. What is, maybe I can post this inquiry to the transportation oversight or to the good senator. If there's a violation of no seat belts, is that a $50 fine or? That was 300. Can we just take a 30-second recess so I can talk to the author to see what we could come mitigate with as an amount?
We'll take a short recess.
Thank you. Speaker, thank you again for giving me the opportunity. As I look at this bill and speaking with the good author of the legislation, I think as we look at the civil penalty that's provided here, I think I'd like to move that penalty from $200 to 50.
On the amendment to change the penalty from 200 to 50, are there any senators who wish to be heard on the bill? I mean, on the amendment. Is there an objection to the amendment? Seeing and hearing none?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I just want to say, as I support the intent of this bill and I support the legislation, I thank the committee also, Senator Palacios, for working on the amendments, working closely with the good senator, my brother from Baragada, to make the changes. But more importantly, is to safeguard and protect the riders on the bikes. And, Mr. Speaker, you and I know that even in recent years, we've seen some tragedies that have happened because, not just because of the rider, but sometimes the negligence and the carelessness. And if we continue to ask the riders to be very careful, then it just makes it better and easier, and hopefully with the other recommendations that the author of the legislation can probably work with us in probably introducing further legislation to support the safety of all bike riders here in Guam. So, Sina Mossi, for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other senators wish to be heard? If not, I'll invite the sponsor to close or to send it down.
Can I just have a 30-second recess? Mr. Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for not only expressing their support for the piece of legislation, but also expressing some of the other concerns, you know, with regards to this whole notion of bicycle safety. And I must agree, Mr. Speaker, with the good senator from Baragada. You know, despite this legislation being, if it is to so passed and passed into law, it still doesn't negate, and I still want to see, and I still wish there was that continued discussion, that continued push for those bike lanes. Again, we're seeing an increase in the amount of bicyclists and the individuals who utilize bicycles to traverse on our roadways, and, you know, especially with wanting to take advantage of our climate, or wanting to encourage our people to become more healthy, is giving them, you know, those extra opportunities. And really, bike lanes, bike paths are one of those things that I'm sure this body had deliberated on numerous occasions, you know, at length, and came to a consensus that this is something that we want to see as policy. So, I want to, I'm going to, I join in the good senator from Baragada with that continued encouragement, if not demand, for these bike lanes. Even the members of the Guam Cycling Federation see that as a good thing, as they want to continue to encourage the utilization of bicycles. I want to thank, you know, my sister, the good senator from Chalampago, with regards to recognizing the concerns in as far as, maybe it was a little steep in as far as the civil penalties. But along those lines, Mr. Speaker, you know, and in some of the discussions that I'm in talking to the Oversight Chair, I want to refer to Page 5, and actually, in the amended version, on Page 5 and starting in Line 4, where they struck out all of subsection D, "A law enforcement officer observing any violation of this part shall only show warning to the violator for the first offense and a citation to the violator for the second offense or subsequent offense, but shall not arrest or take into custody any person solely for violation of this part." You know, Mr. Speaker, I'm more concerned with regards to, you know, the notification and the recognition that this is now the law. You know, as people now want, you know, are going to be part of this thing, part of the notification process and the education process, getting the people to get used to these things and that this now becomes a necessity. So, along those lines, and I'm hoping that if he passed, looking at me like, what are you going to try to do here, is actually, is reinstate actually that subsection D. So, that would be my amendment.
On the motion to reinstate subsection D on Page 5, any senator wish to be heard on the motion to reinstate it? Is there an objection to?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, again, once again, I want to thank my colleagues, and I most especially want to thank the Guam Cycling Federation, Mr. Darrell Taggart, you know, and his group, and also the Department of Public Works and the Office of Highway Safety. You know, at one point in time, the Office of Highway Safety, I checked with them earlier, they used to pass out bicycle helmets as part of the whole safety program. And I'm hoping now that as a result of this, through the Highway Safety Program, you know, that we can reinstitute this program. It's a safe thing. It's a proactive thing. It's a safety issue. We want our people, we want our kids to be safe, and this legislation would lead us in that direction. So, with that, Mr. Speaker, I move to, for it to go down to third reading.
On the motion to send the bill to the voting file, any objection? Hearing and seeing none, so ordered. Senator Panglinen, you're recognized on Bill 369.
Sidus Mossi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 369-31 COR be placed in the third reading, and I'd like to discuss the bill very briefly.
Seeing no objection, so ordered. You're recognized.
Sidus Mossi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 369-31 is a bill to assign a zoning designation to an unzoned lot at this time. As you know, when the Excess Lands Act was passed, and then the local law was passed directing that these excess properties returned by the federal government to the government of Guam be returned to the original landowners, they were all unzoned at the time. And Bill 369-31 would assign a single-family dwelling, R1 zone, to a piece of property in Baragada owned by Mrs. Quintaniza, or Quintaniza, rather, I'm sorry, who wishes to give this property to her children. It's a single-house lot, Mr. Speaker, consisting of approximately 700 square meters. And so, we're not talking about any kind of massive rezoning. We're not even rezoning. We are just assigning a zone to an unzoned lot of which is not within the purview of the Guam Land Use Commission. It's only within the purview of the legislature. And so, this property is located up towards PC Luhon. It's in a single-family neighborhood. It will be zoned single-family so that Mrs. Quintaniza can give the property to her children who wish to just build a single-family house. So, I'd like to move that the bill be placed in the voting file.
Are there any senators who wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Duñez.
Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, 369-31. And I do so because I actually have a bill that's currently awaiting a public hearing that will take care of an issue just like this. Mr. Speaker, many lands that have been returned by the federal government to our ancestral lands commission and then subsequently given back to original landowners currently have no zoning designation, Mr. Speaker. And many families now who find themselves with these returned lands cannot move forward to lease them, to subdivide them, to sell them. And many of these families, Mr. Speaker, have medical difficulties, have financial problems, their children need help. And it's for this reason, Mr. Speaker, that we can do this for this piece of property. And, Mr. Speaker, even if those families now wanted to go forward and go to the Guam Land Use Commission and have their property rezoned so that they could use it to its highest and best use, they can't do that, Mr. Speaker. And it's sad. We need to get that law, that bill heard and signed into law as soon as possible because many people are suffering, Mr. Speaker. So, I wanted to go on the record as supporting this legislation, because even if this legislature wanted to do that for those families, to simply zone, we know the process here, Mr. Speaker. Sometimes it can take two, three, six months, a year to get a bill to the floor so that we can solve problems like this while people continue to suffer. And days, weeks, and years go by, which some people don't have, Mr. Speaker. So, I commend the author for taking care of this particular family and understanding their need to be able to realize their home, their dream of homeownership. But for many others, it's not even that. It's much more simple, such as just needing to take care of their families or even try to take care of themselves, Mr. Speaker, and maybe have perhaps a little more time with their families here on this earth. So, I commend the author, and I rise in support, and I hope that by this next session that we have, Mr. Speaker, that bill that I introduced can hit this floor, and we could finally have all those lots zoned agriculture so that those families can go to the Guam Land Use Commission and be able to have that property, or the speculators, or those who would buy their property or lease it so that they can help those families, that they could do the process of going to the Land Use Commission, Mr. Speaker, in order to ascertain the highest and best use of that property. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this bill and support it, Mr. Speaker. Sidus Mossi.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. Senator Palacios, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, and this is for the listening audience. This is not spot zoning, and this is, of course, this issue cannot go to the Territorial Land Use Commission simply because only the legislature can assign zone for the initial zoning. And then from there on, the Territorial Land Use Commission then can do a so-called rezoning. That's why this bill came before us because it has no zone, and only the legislature can assign a zone. And I support this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much for that clarification, Senator Palacios. Any other senator wish to be heard? If not, I'll invite the sponsor to close or to send it down.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for their support on this and their understanding. But I also want to clarify something because one of the retiring speakers was saying that if we had, if the committee had heard his bill and we passed it, that we would resolve this kind of problem. I think that if we heard his bill and passed it, it would create a problem for this landowner because we would now be creating a substandard lot, giving him an agricultural zoning. because we would now be creating a substandard lot, giving him an agricultural zone, can't build on it, and now they got to go to the Land Use Commission and get a rezoning. Why would you want to do that to a landowner who has 700 square meters? Because you want to just do a blanket thing? These things just, there are situations where it doesn't work, and the bill, the way it's written, would create a problem for the landowners and not solve it. And to say that, you know, if we had, if the committee had only done its work and moved on the bill, we won't need this. We will still need this unless we want to add the, want to burden this old lady who wants to give this property to her children with the burden of having to go through the Land Use Commission to get a rezoning. That's why we continue to take a look at bills that are proposed to us, we will have the hearings on them, we will listen to some of the issues that may result from the unintended consequences of blanket, you know, policies that may not fit these situations and may create a problem for this. That's why, Mr. Speaker, when we did, through the good work of the author of the legislation that he's pitching, through his good work and our cooperation, we decided we weren't going to do something blanket with the Punta dos Montes, for example, that we actually took our time, sat down, had the planners go to work, had the private landowners get together, you know, and we went through the entire process of trying to do the best job we can and not present a one-size-fits-all solution because then it would have created greater burdens on those landowners. That's why, and I give him credit because he was very cooperative with that, we did the Punta dos Montes master plan, taking in all the considerations of the landowners, the staff and the recommendation of the staff where he was, when he was director at that time, and we didn't do a one-size-fits-all solution because that would have created burdens and problems to all the landowners. So I do want to say just, you know, we will hear the bill, we will move forward, and we also want to make sure that when we move forward on that initiative, that we don't end up creating problems for small landowners, single-lot landowners, who are in the middle of dead end though and now are going to get their property zoned agricultural. It doesn't make sense. So we've got to be able to get the input, tweak the proposal, to make sure that we don't have any kind of additional burdens we may impose on people, and we resolve the problems that they have with a solution that they need. So I want to thank again my colleagues for their thoughts and comments on bill 369, and again, move it to third.
On the motion to place it on the voting file, hearing no objection. You may be recognized on 370 also, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, 370 is almost a companion bill to, is a companion bill to 369. There, the, Mrs. Quintaniza owns two lots there, and she wants to give both lots, but because of our requirement that each land bill be a single subject matter concerning one single piece of property, we had to do the two different bills for the two different lots. But they're basically identical lots located right next to each other in the same situation, an unzoned lot that requires initial zoning, and the initial zoning would be for an R1, which is consistent with the use of the surrounding properties in the area. And move that it be placed in third.
Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Duñez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Once again, I rise in full support of bill 370 and understanding the comments from the good speaker, retiring speaker, on bill 369. I certainly understand, having served only a year and a half at land management, but taking my job very seriously, I certainly understand the comment of not having a one-size-fits-all solution. But, Mr. Speaker, it is much easier for the director of the Department of Land Management to do a summary zone change on an agricultural lot to single-family dwelling or even to multiple-family dwelling that doesn't take the GOUC process as we go above the single-family dwelling regulations. That's why, Mr. Speaker, when I introduced the bill, and I won't ask for it with regard to this, but when I introduced the bill here that was signed into law weeks ago that requires and asks for a report be attached by the Department of Land Management, I understand because this is not the GOUC process, and understand we're not going through that now, that it doesn't need to be attached, these bills, which I support. Once again, it is, that's right, and I did support quite heavily and put a lot of work into the Punta dos Montes project. But I will say that it's not fair to just say also that it would create undue pressure or undue, knowing that the director has the discretion to do summary zone changes, to help families, because I even did that, Mr. Speaker, during my time there. Many families came to me in need because of the fact that they had issues that were going to create properties of legal non-conforming, and I saw the need of those people, and I worked my butt off with planning and all the divisions within the Department of Land Management to handle that issue. So once again, I support this issue, and I look forward also to having my bill here heard soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. On bill 370, any other senator wish to be heard? If not, the sponsor may send it down or close. Senator Panglinian, you're recognized. On the motion to place it in the voting file, any objection? The next bill on the agenda is bill 397. Are you ready, Senator?
I got a substitute version that's being printed right now so we can move down to the next.
Okay.
Oh, here it is, I'm sorry, I've got it. Can I just have a one-minute recess? It's being printed already.
We'll take a recess.
I move that bill 397-31 as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary and as further substituted on the floor. That's the version that we are talking about.
On the motion to accept, hearing no objection.
Mr. Speaker, bill 397-31 seeks to restrict the use of mobile phones while operating a vehicle and also provides for public education regarding these restrictions. The current law right now only prohibits, prohibits reading, writing, or sending electronic messages while operating a motor vehicle. Bill 397 goes one step further and actually bans the use or even holding a mobile phone in your hand or similar electronic communications device while operating a motor vehicle. Now, it does provide for exemptions in that, well, first of all, let me back up a little bit. The bill seeks to really address, at least at the minimum, two of the three driving distractions. There's the visual distraction where you actually take your eyes off the road because you're busy dialing or whatever. There's the manual distraction where you take your hands off the wheel because you're trying to fiddle around with a phone as well as other things. And then, of course, there's the cognitive distraction, trying to talk on the phone while trying to concentrate on your driving. The bill does allow for the use, communicating on your cell phone if you're using a hands-free device such as your Bluetooth on the car, a Bluetooth earpiece, or a hardwire to your That is going to be allowed, but also the only time that you'll be able to actually be using your handpiece while driving is if you're having to make an emergency 911 call to a law enforcement official or other emergency responses. Now, initially, when this bill was started, it was introduced, it was going to allow for the exemption of your commercial operators, your truck drivers, your pizza delivery man to be able to, as long as he's driving a company vehicle, to be able to be using that telephone so that he can stay in contact with his dispatcher. That exemption is actually, the bill does not allow for that exemption, except for the first 30 days after enactment, and that's to allow these companies to be able to actually purchase either the necessary Bluetooth or your, whatever device that may be necessary to allow them to operate hands-free while driving. The bill does allow that, of course, the amateur radio, the ham radio, or the CB radios, which is otherwise known as what they call a simplex, wherein it only allows for a one-way communications, that those will still be allowed in the vehicles. The, of course, it provides for penalties that, basically, the initial penalty, initial violation will be a penalty of no less than $100. Repeat violations be punished by a fine of no less than $500. And if in the event that a collision does occur and it can be determined that it's attributed to the use of your cell phone, the fine will then be no less than $1,000 and may result in the suspension or revocation of driving privileges. Now, it's also important that our drivers out there on our roadways become educated about the, these new restrictions. And so the bill provides for requirements for education on the part of, for example, your wireless carriers, that within 30 days from enactment, they have to send out a message to all their wireless subscribers about the new law prohibiting the use of cell phones while driving. In the same way, also, companies that rent cars have to provide a notice to their renters about the restrictions. The sellers of cars have to provide the same notice. But the Car Dealers Association raised the issue about, you know, not wanting to be required to do this forever and ever. So the bill does provide for a sunset clause that after one year from enactment of this act, they don't have to actually be providing those notices. The bill provides that the effective date of this act shall be 30 days from the date of enactment. So that gives drivers some time to be able to either make the necessary adjustments to be able to communicate hands-free while driving or basically adjust to the new mode of just putting away the cell phone and waiting until you get to your destination, which probably is no more than 10, 15 minutes away. So that, Mr. Speaker, is the gist of bill 397, which seeks to restrict the use of mobile phones while operating a vehicle.
Any senators wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Panglinian.
Speaker, I guess the only concern I have is on the, or not the only concern, but certainly the issue of the effective date is 30 days after enactment, which means that it's kind of awkward to have the police officer pull somebody out to require that, to remind them that 30 days from now you can't be doing that. I don't know how many of the police officers will do that. So maybe it's, the fines maybe shouldn't be effective 30 days after enactment, but the police officer should get into also the habit of enforcing this requirement. It, I guess it's just a matter of, if we're going to make it 30 days after, how do we get the message out that 30 days from now, that what you're doing is going to result in a violation of the law and that you will be subject to a fine? So maybe they can just figure that out in terms of a GPD and the governor's office and how they can coordinate doing that, and we don't need to do anything else. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't say, we don't have the police officers not doing anything because it's not effective yet, so they can't even tell you that you're going to be violating, or you will be violating the law, and how enthusiastic they're going to be about, you know, doing that. So, but I'm sure they'll figure it out, hopefully, and we'll begin an education campaign on the effects of this law and what it means to the driving public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinian. Any other senator wish to be heard on 397? Senator Blas, you're recognized. Senator Blas.
I have a short recess.
Any other senators, then? If not, then I'll invite the sponsor to close with whatever corrections we're going to make.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to make one correction. It's on page four, line three. That should read section 3346 dot B, and then close, open parentheses, two, the numeral two, and then close parentheses, as opposed to double I.
Everybody get that amendment? Any senator wish to speak on that amendment? Seeing none, you may continue, Senator Hadda.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just asked my colleagues, there's been a lot of discussion about the restriction of cellphones, and, you know, I think some people have even questioned about where are the numbers, where are the studies? I guess you can pull out one study that says that cellphones are a significant distraction in driving. Other studies show that it is not. But I think we can all judge from ourselves. We take a look in this room, everybody in here has a cellphone. I think at one time or another, we've attempted to either read or send a text message while we've been driving, and inevitably, we find ourselves moving into another lane or where the stop sign. And those, so I'm not convinced that we really need a study to reinforce that because we know that it's happening out there. We know that when the light turns green, you have to honk your horn at the guy in front of you because he's busy reading or texting, and we've got to be able to operate safely on our roads. So, I would just ask my colleagues to consider the bill, and I ask for their support in passing this legislation. Thank you very much.
On the motion to place the bill in the voting file, seeing no objection. The next bill on the agenda is Bill 399. Senator Pangolinan?
Ms. Sodismasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 399-31 COR substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land be placed in the third reading file. I'd like to discuss the bill.
On the motion to accept the substituted version, so ordered, on the motion to place it in the third reading with you to discuss, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 399 as substituted is a bill that would kind of reverse an interpretation that the retirement fund had made on existing legislation by clarifying and putting into law what was practiced and allowed with a former interpretation. And basically, Mr. Speaker, I'm talking about a survivor annuity for a child whose parent has died while that child is attending college. In the original, in the original law as amended, we found that children were turning 18 while they were still in high school. And the way that the retirement fund had applied the interpretation was that if the member dies and that child is 18 and is in high school, when he goes on to college after he, if, when he goes on to college, he doesn't become eligible for the survivor annuity, which is really miniscule. I think it's like $92 at this time for that child to help him with his college expenses. And so, we amended the law to say that if the child is 18 and in high school and goes on and continues being in college, then the child would qualify for the survivor annuity. Then we saw that there was another situation where the child is in college and he has been in college since his, since leaving high school. But when his, if he's 19 years old in college and his parent dies, even though he has been continuously attending college after graduation, he doesn't become eligible for the, or he or she doesn't become eligible for the survivor annuity. And the past, the retirement fund board was taking the issue of, as long as that child was continuously in college from high school, that they would allow the child to receive that survivor annuity, even if he was already in college when the member dies. And then, the retirement fund, after putting this into practice, reversed itself and, basically, now if a child is 19, even though they've been in college continuously and the member dies, they now take away the survivor annuity, this $92, $92 a month, I believe, somewhere in that neighborhood. So, what this bill does is it then allows that child to be able to continue to receive the survivor annuity as long as he's being carried as a dependent of the family, the member, when that member dies and he continuously stays in college. So, it just took that earlier interpretation and now allows it by being clear on that. And then, it allows the child to stay, to receive that survivor annuity up to the age of 25. And so, that, Mr. Speaker, basically, is what this allows the retirement fund to go back to their old interpretation of allowing these children of members who pass away to continue receiving and being eligible for a survivor child annuity while continuing their further education. And it doesn't set the standard of when the member dies, so that, I mean, it sets the standard that that child will be eligible for that survivor annuity as long as they're in college, regardless of whether they're 18 or not, when the member dies. It's, the trigger is that they continuously are enrolled in a higher educational institution. And so, that in very simple language and intent is what is in the bill, and we worked with the retirement fund to basically rewrite that section of the law that had caused it for misinterpretation. And that's why you have entire sections stricken out because we basically then, with the help of the retirement fund and their legal counsel, rewrote that section of the law to continue what has been past practice. And what was the intent of the legislature is to continue to have these children supported by the small survivor annuity pension while they are continuing on in college.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 399? Any senator wish to be heard on Bill 399? Seeing no hands, Senator Pangolinan, you may close or just send it down.
Thank you, Ms. Sodismasi, Mr. Speaker. Once again, you know, Mr. Speaker, it's, we all know the challenges of trying to support a child while that child pursues his dreams and builds the foundation for its successful achievement of that dream through higher education. And we know the challenges that our GovGuam retirees or GovGuam members face when they lose a spouse and income is cut in half, basically, from the current family economic base, because that's exactly what happens. If you have a member of the retirement fund who passes away, is that the survivor annuity is only 50% of the pay. And so, you have now cut half of the family's economic base, and then, when that child continues to go to school scraping by, you know, you cut him off also from this $92 annuity, it just doesn't make sense. And so, and most especially when it's a reinterpretation of a policy that had been, that had allowed these children to receive that small survivor annuity while pursuing higher education. And so, this would correct that, and I thank my colleagues for their consideration and hopefully their vote on this bill. Ms. Sodismasi?
On the motion to place it in the voting file, hearing no objection. Senator Palacios, you're recognized on Bill 400.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill 400 be placed on the third reading file for progressive discussion, then if I may just give an overview.
Seeing no objection, so ordered.
Mr. Speaker, of the few challenges not being dealt with by the board, such as no office, the call room issue, the one that nowadays most concerns all of the board members, and six of them, is having to vote in public whether to deny parole or to revoke parole for a less violation. All board members express great apprehension in having to vote in public. Some of them actually express fear of repercussion if they were to vote to revoke a parole or if they were to vote to deny parole. Now, this bill, Mr. Speaker, was drafted and marked up with substantial participation by all board members. Originally, the idea was brought to my attention and the problem, the issue that required the necessity by the chairman of the board, and then we had about three, four meetings leading up to the drafting of the bill. And even after the public hearing, Mr. Speaker, we met again for the markup. Mr. Speaker, in our research, a number of states actually have closed at least portions of the parole board meetings to the public, and this is California, Georgia, and Kentucky. Each conduct their deliberation in closed meeting. No objection was raised, Mr. Speaker, during the public hearing. In fact, Dr. Deian Strong, and that, an activist for the rights and welfare of inmates, submitted a written report, and I, to me, that was really significant because this has always been at odds with the parole board, but this time, she supported this bill. The Attorney General did not object and offered the language that would make it clear that deliberation and voting may take place in executive session, and this is noted in line 20 on page three, which is the language that, after promulgation of the rules and regulations subject to the AAA process, that indeed now they can, they can actually conduct voting and deliberation in closed-door sessions, notwithstanding the open government law. Voting in, voting in executive session, Mr. Speaker, would not diminish, in my opinion, the fairness of the deliberation of the board, and it would not diminish the decision of the board. This coming Friday, and in fact, Mr. Speaker, this coming Friday, I'll be meeting with the parole board in my office to discuss the several issues that they are now facing. Of course, definitely, this would be a discussion, and also, the venue for which they can be meeting. Right now, they have no place, no designated place. They're not comfortable with conducting parole board hearing at the Department of Corrections or at the precinct in Dedado. It's just, I offer my office for at least administrative meetings in drafting some rules and regulations, but that's an issue that we have to settle. And this coming Friday, the board will be meeting about 6:00, 6:00 o'clock in the evening in my office, again, to see how we can get this board going with six members out of seven that are active right now. So, with this one, at least this will remove one of what they perceive to be obstacles or to be a hardship or a problem in conducting first the hearing. Once this is passed into law, for example, and I ask my colleagues for their consideration, is then maybe we can zero in on the venue by where they can be meeting, and hopefully that they can get on the board. So, I ask my colleagues to, you know, to consider this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Any senator wish to be heard on Bill 400? Seeing no hands, Senator Palacios, do you wish to close? On the motion to send the bill down to the voting file, any objections? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Major Leedder, I understand you have a motion. I don't, oh, there he is. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized on Bill 158.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place Bill 158 on the third reading file and ask to be, to discuss it briefly.
Seeing no objection and hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 158 is a legislation that will establish an urgent care outpatient medical service center at the Guam Memorial Hospital. We know that the emergency room, Mr. Speaker, has been a source of, of really great number of problems with the finances of the hospital, the congestion that happens there. Our, you know, some of our people using it as a clinic, especially after hours, and even though there is current plans on the way to expand the ER and the CC unit of the hospital, it still would not, it still would not address the, you know, the root problem of individuals going to the hospital and using it as a clinic, especially during after hours. When I first introduced this measure, Mr. Speaker, there was some concern within the hospital community that mandating them to do this would cost them, you know, extra money and may be problematic. However, when I asked them to look into it and to read what this bill is calling for, it's calling for a private entity to run and operate this outpatient center at the hospital. When you look at other successful hospitals in the mainland, and even the one that is going to be built here, the private hospital, they've included an urgent care facility that will be in the hospital itself. And so, there must be something to that, you know? It could be very telling that this is something that makes good business sense to be included within a hospital facility. We've also, earlier, early, last year, when we passed the 2012 fiscal year budget, in one of the miscellaneous provisions, we've identified and reprogrammed about $370,000 to the Guam Memorial Hospital from bond proceeds, and $50,000 of that we've designated specifically for the hospital to use to plan and to carry out the implementation of a urgent care center. And so, you know, not only if we pass this legislation would it be good for the hospital, but they are, there's funding available now that would help them, you know? For example, if the board of trustees determines that perhaps moving, let's say, the administration department of the hospital, which is in prime location right now in the hospital, the first floor, moving them up to fourth floor or moving them offsite, which is not, which is not unusual for hospitals who have to have the administration offsite, then, you know, this sort of funding can help in getting that space ready for an urgent care center. And so, I ask my colleagues to please positively consider this. I know that we all have the intention of being able to help our hospital, of being able to alleviate the congestion at the emergency room. We have all personally, if not personally, had a family or friend experience the hardships in being seen in the ER of our only civilian hospital. So, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. Any senator wish to be heard on Bill 158? Senator Palacios? Any others after Senator Palacios? Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I rise and support of this bill. Right now, Mr. Speaker, if you were to go to GMH, there's really no differentiation between what is emergency and what is urgent, and everybody gets mixed in, whoever comes first, of course. If a person is dying, definitely there'll be emergency. But what this would do, Mr. Speaker, is at least there'll be separation, immediate attention, of course, to the emergency and those that just requiring urgent attention, probably at a different department. It will alleviate congestion up there right now. Right now, it can only make the hospital more efficient, and the attention to the individuals going there will be more immediate in that now you start to, what you call it, the triage approach, that you categorize this by maybe two groups or three groups, so that that way, if there is an outlet that can take care of the urgent care, that means that there'll be that less individual at the emergency room, costing those people with just urgent care need probably what? I don't know how much now is the use of the emergency room. I think $1,000. And those are the things to consider, and it, like I said, it can only make the hospital more efficient and more immediate attention, more efficient attention, of course, to those that are going there. I support this bill, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, anytime we try to be able to improve the delivery of services for our healthcare system, I, you know, with that intent, I'm very much in support of. As I look through the bill and with regards to the establishment, I just wonder if the author of the legislation could yield to a question, that question being, in the establishment of the urgent care center, would this require any funding and where would that funding come from?
Senator Rodriguez, do you yield?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I would think there's some funding that will be required in the part of the entity that would establish the urgent care center. So, you know, that would be something where, the way it's written now is, is the hospital could very well be the landlord of this urgent care center.
Is that answer sufficient, or does that answer your question, or do you wish further--
That actually just compounds the question, compounds the concern a little bit more. Can you take a 30-second recess, please?
We'll take a short recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For, Mr. Speaker, for that opportunity to be able to discuss this further in recess with my colleagues. And it's my understanding that contained in the existing budget is a $50,000 allocation for the establishment of the urgent care. Well, am I correct in that assumption if I can yield that question to the author?
Senator Rodriguez, will you yield?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Public Law 3177, I believe it's Chapter 11, Section 7, that does have a provision that we had identified and reprogrammed $370,000, and of that, up to $50,000 was set aside specifically for the implementation of an urgent care center. And that $50,000, of course, will not be to build out a space if it's identified, but it's to help in the process to, you know, whatever is needed to get this established.
Is that answer sufficient for you?
That answer is basically sufficient, but I think, Mr. Speaker, you know as well as I do, there's difference between allocation and authorization with regards to the monies. I think in previous discussions and even discussions with regards to, that we had with Guam Memorial Hospital over the last couple of weeks, the last few weeks, is that there's no money. And my concern here is whether or not there is that $50,000, or they able, were they ever able to make that, you know, put that money in the bank? That's it.
I believe the Good Sponsor may have a response to that.
Sure.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Speaker. Yes, this one is a little bit different. These, the fundings for these are from the Tobacco Settlement bonds. And so the 320 is something that they already had cash on hand at the hospital, and so, you know, we'll assume that $50,000 is there as well.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez.
And thank you very much. I appreciate, you know, that's a good piece of information to know. You know, but along those lines, Mr. Speaker, you know, earlier in the day, this body had deliberated on another bill that basically required a feasibility study be conducted with public health or with our healthcare industry, for that matter, on being able to establish urgent care centers, you know, within our public health facilities or in my reading of the language of that bill, was in other facilities that we have here on Guam. I'd like to be able to see this as a complement to that bill. I just don't want two pieces of legislation to be able to go to the healthcare industry and then they come back to us and says, which one is it? Is it A or B? If there's a way that we can merge in as far as the two bills together and the two thought processes together, so that we look at the idea. I recognize that, you know, the concern that we got is to alleviate the continuous overcrowding situation that we see on a daily basis at the Guam Memorial Hospital, you know, for individuals who can, who go there, who aren't necessarily, and I don't want to say it's an emergency, because anytime you go to that emergency room, you can say it's an emergency, but for facilities that can, other facilities that can provide these services and not put that over stress and over burden on the emergency room personnel. Again, I see that in this bill, it basically proposes that the emergency room act as a triage, and then possibly go take these individuals through the triage process if it just requires urgent care services in that area, they go that area. Does not alleviate the overcrowding that will exist there. And I think that, you know, one of the things, I'd like to see this in another way. Make the urgent care centers more accessible and closer to individuals' homes, have them go there, perform the triage there. If it is necessary for them to go through the emergency room, at least they start the primary medical care in these urgent care centers and then get transported to the emergency room, not the other way around. And so, you know, with that, again, I'm in support of any type of legislation that helps to improve the delivery of the services of this thing, and I'll look at this closely, a little bit more closely, in complement to the other piece of legislation that this body had already deliberated earlier in the day. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thanks, Senator Blas. Any other senator who wish to be heard on Bill 158? Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly commend the author for trying to find a solution to a problem that we all know is the overcrowding at GMH on the intake side of the emergency room and the need that they must attend to every patient that walks in there. But the problem that I have with the proposal is that it just mandates that an urgent care center be established there, that it be built, which we know there's a lack of space at GMH. Where are we going to put it? What's the investment to build the facility or replace and move and make renovations to the facility, and how are we going to fund that? Because if you're the landlord, you have to have space to rent, and does GMH have space to rent when we're now dictating that even before we know that, we're saying, put up an urgent care center? Now, the operation of the urgent care center may be by a physician's group or a group of physicians or a private medical clinic to either lease and/or operate the functions of an urgent care center within the hospital premises, and that it shall be for five years. What happens if we have, when we find that the provision of urgent care may not be financially feasible for these group of physicians or private medical clinic? We actually have seen private medical clinics that have opened up in a stone's throw from the ER room in which they discontinued the hours of the clinic, and because it was privately operated, I can't tell you why, but I would just assume that it wasn't financially feasible for them to establish and staff that urgent care, given that it's so close to the hospital and that these individuals, rather than stopping by at urgent care, drive directly to GMH. And so if you have the urgent care right there at GMH, then you kind of, it's counterproductive to alleviating the overcrowding in that area. And my colleague from my village of Baragada, I think, has a good point, is that if our idea is to triage the patients so that we remove that, you know, is that that triage doesn't have to occur right at GMH, that, you know, you could have it at some other facility, if it's a private clinic, why would they operate that when they have their own facility? It may be more advantageous for them. Or, you know, again, these are the questions, because we are mandating an urgent care center already without answering any of these questions. And a good author may have all these answers in his mind, but it's not in the law, or it's not being proposed. It's, but we don't set those parameters in terms of how are we going to handle this. And to mandate it at GMH, you know, again, what are the current demands? What are the current economics of this? We know that it may be helpful to the hospital, we think it will be, and so forth. So, and how much is it going to cost to outfit, construct, and put in place all the infrastructure requirements? Equipment, maybe, we'll say that whoever's going to run it has to bring their own equipment, so we may not need to account for that. But there is a large cost when you're constructing something at a hospital that has to meet not only hospital standards, but of course, the medical clinic standards. And so it may even be more expensive to build a facility there than to have an off-site facility for that purpose. So I definitely understand the need to continue to search for answers on how do we help GMH? And we already have set aside money to expand the emergency room at GMH. So there's cold, hard cash, they've announced the, announcements of the bid, they're in the design phase of expanding the emergency room capacity there. And to put an additional requirement of an urgent care center, and then we're now going to lease that out. Is it going to be the new section? Are we now building it for a private developer to come in so that he doesn't have to make that investment? Are we going to subsidize their operations? I mean, if they're willing to make the investment because the economics are there, then let them make the investment, and why are we going to subsidize them? Which may end up exactly what is being, may be the outcome of this legislation, the way it's currently written. So I still under, I still support the idea of trying to find a solution. I'm not sure that mandating a specific direction is the way to go. I think that, I'm sure, that we continue to require GMH to update us on their plans, to continue to update us on some of their planning activities, some of their studies, on how to alleviate the problem, and from there, come forward and make the proposals on what would be the required statutory authority that we need to grant them to implement a solution that may work, rather than to mandate one that we don't know is going to work at this time. So those are some of the issues that I grapple with as I look at this and try to figure out how it's going to work, try to figure out how it could work. But the way that I may be thinking about implementing this may not be the way that they will implement it unless we specify in statute that this is the criteria for doing so. We know that whatever's built has to meet, you know, the urgent care standards, hospital standards, and so forth. So the requirement for all that in here, that it meets those standards, even without putting that in law, they probably couldn't build something in there that doesn't meet those standards and be able to build Medicare and Medicaid and health insurance companies. So that doesn't resolve the issue for me, because that has to happen no matter what, I believe, if they're going to do it right. It is the idea of, you know, mandating that one single direction, that one single solution to that problem, and not knowing that it's going, it's what is needed. I don't have the confidence in terms of looking at what's been presented, that we have kind of said, this is the solution to alleviating the GMH issue with regards to the emergency room and so forth. So I'm still continuing to look at this, maybe make a few phone calls, also to get additional information and validate some of the issues that have been raised, as well as search for some answers that I have that have not been answered in the committee report as well as in the discussion on this floor, and then I'll make my decision on how to proceed with acting on this bill. Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolino. Any other senator who wish to be heard on the bill? Any other senator who wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Ada, is that the yes? Senator Adda, is that the yes?
You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just have a, I'd like to proffer an amendment, and it'll be on page two.
Please proceed.
Starting on line 20. And it's just to, it's just to delete the words, "but not less than three years." And that's also on line 22, "but not less than three years." And I, and I think the hospital should have that flexibility to decide whether one, two, or three years, or up to five years, is something that they would like to look into. But I think for them to say that "not less than three years" locks the hospital into something that, after two years, they don't, they don't find themselves either making money, or they find themselves going further into debt. So, with that flexibility of having them to just have that ability to go from one to five years, I think would be, would be the, the answer for that. So, that's my amendment, is just to delete the words, "but not less than three years."
On the Adda Amendment to strike up to three years, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I don't necessarily have an objection to that, but just to maybe share why we put that, that in there, is that we know, just like the previous speaker has said, that it could be a substantial amount to get this facility up and running. And the intent of this is to have that cost be borne by the private entity. And so, sometimes when they look at, at what is being offered, and, you know, the, the years that, the amount of time that's being offered, for the length of the contract, sometimes may be too short for them to be able to recoup, you know, whatever investments they, they put in there. But, but I don't have, I necessarily have an objection to that, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Any other senator wish to be heard on, on the Adda Amendment? Is there an objection to the amendment? Seeing nor hearing an amend, an objection, amendment is carried. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Adda, you're, you may continue if you wish. Senator Adda, do you have anything further?
Nothing, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, sir.
Any other senator wish to be heard? If not, I'll invite the sponsor to close.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm going to, while I close here, try to answer as much as I could some of the concerns that were brought up. But first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for speaking on, on this measure. One of the issues that were brought up was the, and the concerns, and, and it's a good concern, is the space of the hospital, because we know it's a, it's somewhere where it's, it's really hard to find spaces there. The G, the, the annex that was built a few years ago, Mr. Speaker, my understanding, my, my belief there is that the intent of that annex was for an outpatient, outpatient services. And so, you know, as we were talking with the GMH officials, that was one of the, of the areas that may be looked at as an urgent care center. Another area I know is the hemodialysis unit, which is about 5,000, 5,000 square feet, which now is empty, but I know during the, the ER expansion, it's going to be used to, 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 is going to be used during the ER expansion. And so, that is another space that, that could be made available for an urgent care center. And something that I've always said, and, and this is something I truly believe in, is that the administration wing of the hospital is prime location. I mean, has its own parking lot right in front there, and really could, could very well be an urgent care outpatient center. The other concern that was brought up was, maybe this urgent care shouldn't be at the hospital, it should be somewhere else. A good friend of mine, and an individual who had provided testimony, which is included in the committee report, Chuck Tanner, I quote him, you know, he said, "A tenant of health care is to provide the right care at the right time and at the right place." And as I mentioned earlier in a previous bill, that when you have an emergency, or you think it's an emergency, you know, as a father, you know, your, your child is experiencing some, some health problems, you know, right away, I would rush to seek my, my child to the emergency room, thinking that it is an emergency. However, if, if there is a triage there, that, you know, that of course has to be manned and operated, and it must remain the responsibility of the hospital to determine, you know, whether a physician or a registered nurse would determine that this case is not of an emergent case, then be directed into the urgent care. And so, there's no time lapse in, you know, although it may not be emergent, it's something that's urgent, and must also be dealt with and treated immediately by, by health professionals. And so, really, this, this idea, Mr. Speaker, is, is nothing new. I know that this is something that has been tossed and talked about, and I believe, as I mentioned earlier, the building of that annex area, the hospital, was meant for outpatient services, but was never implemented. You know, I just thought that, knowing all this, that maybe it was, it was, it was right for us to, to implement this, this policy, to make it policy. Because although it's something that has been talked about and maybe discussed, we've never took that leap, you know, and said, "Okay, this is something that, that we must do." The bill, Mr. Speaker, if enacted, would require GMH to develop an urgent care center criteria required to provide the medical services mandated pursuant to, to the spirit and intent of this act. Number two, identify and dedicate adequate available space for the establishment of urgent care facility. And number three, announce and solicit a request for proposal pursuant to applicable procurement law relative to the availability of the opportunity to provide contractual services to manage and operate an urgent care center. And so, you know, if we pass this, it's not to say that immediately, we've, we've, you know, they have to set this thing up, and we're going to put the hospital in another financial bind to get them to set up a space there. What this does is, is prepare them, and, and also, it doesn't move forward until there is a positive response to any request for proposals, Mr. Speaker. And so, lastly, you know, one thing that I didn't mention earlier was that, that the cost benefits to having an urgent care versus an emergency, the, the cost benefits of having an emergency care procedure or treatment done versus an emergency room treatment when it's not an emergency case is, 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 is great, Mr. Speaker. We all know that, you know, a cost at emergency room for, let's say, $3,000, could cost anywhere from $1,000 to maybe $1,500 in an emergency room setting, or even less. Many times when our people, individuals, would, would go to the hospital, and even if they have a, a private insurance carrier, if it's not an emergency, if the, if it's determined that it's not an emergency, that you were in there in the, you know, you know, the first place, the insurance would deny coverage of that visit, and the patient would bear the cost of having to pay that, you know, that service. And so, I want to ask my colleagues to please take into consideration all that we've discussed, and, and as the, the previous speaker had said, something that maybe needs, you know, that others may need to, you know, make some phone calls and try to get additional information. But, but really, this is something that I'm asking my, my colleagues to please, let's set this policy now. This is something that's been talked about and discussed in the past, but nothing will happen if we don't make that clear decision and set that policy. So, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. On the motion to place the Bill 158 in the voting file, is there an objection? Seeing or hearing none, so ordered. Mr. Majority Leader, I understand you have a motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Hearing, no objections, ordered.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you've presided over 13 bills that were moved from the second reading file to the voting file, and at the request of the sponsor of Bill 181, Senator Sam Mabini, I move that we place Bill number, that we, that we send Bill 181 back to committee, at the request of the sponsor.
On the motion to send the Bill ba, 181 back to committee, hearing, no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. So, also at the request of the sponsor, I move that that Bill 181, which was just sent back to committee, be replaced by Bill 300-31, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micro-nation Affairs, and Human Resources, Human and Natural Resources, introduced by Sam Mabini, Ph.D. It's an act to amend Title V, GCA Chapter 60, 60113, relative to amending the authorization of the Department of Agriculture to administer and collect fees. I move that this be placed on the second reading file.
On the motion to place Bill 300 on the second reading file, as substituted, is there an objection?
And copies have been made and distributed and placed in the second reading file folder on each senator's desk.
Seeing no objection, the motion to place Bill 300 is, is ordered, and Senator Mabini is recognized for-
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On 300.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill, Bill 300, I ask to be moved to the third reading file as substituted, and, and if I could briefly discuss the bill.
On the motion to accept Bill 300 is accepted, so ordered, on the motion to place Bill 300 in the third reading file, so ordered. You may speak.
Thank you. Bill 300 is a fairly simple bill. It's a follow-up to a previous bill that I had entered, which is now public law 3181, allowing Department of Agriculture to issue permits for clearing, grading, and construction. So, this particular bill, 300, in actuality, is allowing the agency, who is, who now has that added task to issue clearing, grading, and construction permits, to collect fees, which currently they have no authority to do so. And in line with that, and I've noticed, to improve the bill, there's some amendment, there's a couple of small amendments that I'd like to submit on Bill 300. And this would be on page one, line nine, striking out fines, because that, that probably should not have been there. And the, the focus of this is to add fees associated with the processing of clearing, grading, and construction permits.
Okay, on the, on the motion by Senator Mabini to, on line nine, strike the word fines, so it'll read, "and from fees."
That's correct.
So, I guess we'll strike "and."
Yes, that's right. Fines and, that's correct.
All right, so the motion is on line nine, strike fines and. Any objection? Anyone wish to be heard? Hearing and seeing none, may continue.
Thank you. And there is one more amendment, sir, on line nine, excuse me, line 19, page one, so that it does not conflict with the previous paragraph. The last line shows, "All, all such fees shall be used at the discretion of the director." Because the funds are going to be deposited into the Treasury of Guam, that should be striked out. So, from line 19, starting with "all such fees," to the following page, should be struck out, and that would just be the final amendment.
In the version that I have, line one and two are struck, and it just goes straight to "all such fees shall be used at the discretion of the director." You want to strike that, too?
That's correct. Because the previous, the previous paragraph points out that the funds or such monies will be deposited into the Treasury of Guam under the general funds. By setting this up, this would be, this would require another creation of a separate fund.
Thank you. On, on that amendment, is any senator wish to be heard? Senator Palacios?
Just a point of inquiry, it's my understanding, Mr. Speaker, that I think there is a special funds under the control or for the Department of Agriculture. For example, when one would go there and buy seedlings and other things, then you pay in, that money goes to some kind of funds. And I would like the fees collected for the grading and so forth go into that fund. I don't know whether that fund's still existing, but if that is the case, then, rather than go to the general funds and then reappropriate it just for anybody else, I think that it should be, the agriculture that should be able to utilize that funds, even though it will be subject to appropriation by this legislature.
Senator Mabini, on the suggestion by Senator Palacios to have the funds go to the seedling fund, or whatever that special fund is-
They are an existing fund, but I don't know what, what is the title, but I know that when one buys some seedlings and other things, that the money is deposited somewhere. I know it's not going to the general funds. So, any fees collected as a result of the permit for grading, I would like, of course, that that go into that existing special funds.
Let's just take a short break.
Let's take a short rest. Let's take a short rest.
You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, given the concern raised by Senator Palacios on Bill 300, I move that we recess until 2:00 tomorrow, to give both senators some time to, together with the appropriations chairman, to identify that revolving fund and develop the appropriate amendments. I move that we recess till 2:00 tomorrow.
Hearing, no objection, so ordered. We're going to recess until 2:00 tomorrow afternoon. I remind everybody, we have a presentation at 10:00.